Good evening. I'd like to call the May 20th, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Newton County Board of Commissioners to order. We will have our invocation by Commissioner Henderson. And following that, Commissioner Cooper will lead us in the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag. Commissioner Henderson? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We all bow to his. Dear and Father, once again we come before you with Thanksgiving in our heart. We come just thanking you for all that you have done for us in our lives, and we thank you for all that you will do in our lives. We know, my Father, that you are a good God. We know that you are one whom sits up high and look down low. You know what our needs are before we know they are ourselves, and we just ask you to guide us and lead us during this meeting, this we pray. In our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
So how you been doing? How you been doing?
I'm good. I was about to call you.
Madam Chair, before we adopt the agenda, we have been asked to amend the agenda for our Finance Department and Director by adding the renewal of ClearGov digital budget book software for an additional three years from July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2028, to continue its financial ease of use. That's actually going to make it listed under, since it's a renewal, Consent Agenda Line, Item 9G. So again, that's going to be added to or amended to Agenda Item 9G under the Consent Agenda.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion?
Some more seconds.
Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion passed. I'll ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, at this time, we are under Item Number Five, under Citizen Comments. This particular section is slated for Agenda Topics only. So if there is an item that is listed under the Agenda Topics, we ask all citizens, if they have comments, to please come forward at this time. You have a three-minute maximum. The time will be listed on the screen, and when you come forward, please provide your name, first and last name, and property address, please. Agenda topics only.
My name is Annette Austin. I'm with the Chilani Homeowners Association Board. It is good to be here. I'm speaking to the Item Number 14, Public Works. I just wanted to applaud you on finally getting this on here. We've been trying to get this done for almost two years now, and our roads looked horrible. And so I have written letters, emails, everything else. I am glad to see that, you know, this is already, this is on its way to getting started. I'm hoping that even though it says 2026, that they might possibly be able to start even earlier. So that would be a wonderful thing. So really, basically, I just want to impress on you the importance of getting that passed. And thank you for making that happen, everyone who is a part of making sure that our roads and everything are done. Infrastructure is incredibly important right now, and especially with all the building and everything that's going on. So again, just glad to see that this is finally happening. I noted that it's not the entire subdivision. There's still some streets that are missing. So I'm hoping that this is just the start and that they, you know, will continue as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, if there's no one else, then we will close the public comments.
Madam Chair, the next item we have on the agenda are the reports for the Chairman. The first item under that listing is a proclamation. Of course, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and I'll move forward, if you don't mind, with the reading of the proclamation for the minutes.
Yes, thanks.
The proclamation reads, "Whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of the community today is fundamental to the future of Newton County. And whereas, according to Mental Health America of Georgia, Georgia ranks 47 out of 50 states for access to mental health care resources and insurance, and two in five children in Georgia have trouble assessing the mental health treatment they need. And whereas, according to the 2024 Georgia Student Health Survey, 54% of Newton middle school students and 49% of Newton high school students reported feeling depressed. And whereas, according to the 2024 Georgia Student Health Survey, 39% of Newton middle school students and 36% of Newton high school students reported experiencing inten-- excuse me, intense anxiety, worries, or fears that got in the way of their daily activities. And whereas, the Newton County Community Partnership and Drug-Free Coalition Youth Action Team recognizes the need to address the mental health needs in their schools and their peers. And whereas, the Newton County Drug-Free Youth Action Team members coordinate, lead, and support events and projects in their schools and community to raise awareness of mental health resources and support. And whereas, the Newton County Drug-Free Youth Action Team members actively works with local partners to create a community where everyone feels comfortable reaching out for the support they deserve. The Newton County Drug-Free Youth Action Team members believe that ending the stigma around mental health is of paramount importance. The Newton County Drug-Free Youth Action Team members want the community of Newton County to know that recovery can and does happen, and all Newton residents should know that support and help are available regardless of any individual situation. And now therefore I, Lynda Hayes, Chairman of the Newton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Newton County and encourage parents, caregivers, and all residents to learn the signs of a mental disorder and integrate mental health care in children's daily lives. In testimony whereof I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of Newton County of Georgia this 20th day of May 2025, Lynda D. Hayes, Chairman, Newton County Board of Commissioners." Can we get a round of applause for our children? With that, Chairman Hayes, we do have Newton County Community Partnership Incorporated, Ms. Molly Melvin, and our organization, Newton County Drug-Free Youth Action Team members, are presently here today. We're going to ask Ms. Molly to come forward, and she can introduce her team.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Brown, thank you so much for allowing us to come before you again. This is a group that I alluded to in my previous presentation to you. These young people are amazing. They are involved in this program voluntarily. It is external to their school. It is something that most of them do in addition to being involved in academics, sports, and other extracurricular activities. They feel very strongly that the messages that they give to our community, both through peer education and through speaking to adults in their lives, will make the difference in how this community grows in its resilience and its ability to respond to the needs of our families and children. If you would not mind, I would like some of our students to join me, please, and to speak on their behalf.
My name is Francisco Alvarado, and I am a 12th grade student attending the Alcovee High School as well as the Newton College Career Academy. Thank you for giving me the time to present about my Newton County Youth Action Team that I am a part of. Some details I would like to share with you all is that we are extremely passionate about mental health as well as working towards prevention in our communities and in our schools. We are the ones that experience or have people that suffer from these issues in our day-to-day lives. We see people in our schools, in our bathrooms, in our family lives who struggle with mental health, mental illness, as well as some of the repercussions that are come from those things. And so we truly appreciate your support in promoting the Mental Health Awareness Month, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And while Francisco speaks eloquently on behalf of the entire team, what you see before you is one-fifth of our total membership. We have almost 50 students, not counting the 17 that are on college campuses implementing work that they learned how to do as middle school and high school students. So we appreciate your time, your interest, and sharing with your friends that these young people really do care, and they are looking for opportunities to continue to educate the public. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we're going to ask the students to just kind of hang around just a few minutes after the presentation for the Senate bill because they'd like to take a photograph with you all, a group photo with the board as well. I would also like to mention, because they are very modest and humble, Mr. Francisco Alvarado, Ian White are valid Victorians for their high schools. Nicole, is it Vives? She's the salutatorian. Adriana Drain is on the Governor's Honors Final-- she's a Governor's Honors finalist. And then a part of the top 10 students, Isaiah Edmondson and Valeria Tapia? Tapia? And we have those students listed. If we can just kind of give them a round of applause, that's a huge feat. At this time, I'd also like to call forward Ms. Kim Jones and Dr. Lakisha Izard. We call her affectionately Dr. Izzy. They're going to do a brief presentation on Mental Health Bill, Senate Bill 182-- excuse me, 132, that's Senate Bill 132. And thank you, ladies.
All right. Well, good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners, and of course, to our county manager. Thank you all so much for welcoming Mrs. Kim Jones today to do this presentation. I thought this presentation was fit because it was authored by one of our key senators here for Newton County, which is Brian Strickland. Again, I am Dr. Lakisha Izard, finally known as Dr. Izzy. I am a licensed professional counselor, and I was appointed by our great Board of Commissioners of Newton County in 2021 to serve on the Georgia Department of Behavior, Health, and Advisory Commission and Board. So thank you so much. Ms. Jones?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Izzy. Thank you, Chairman and Counsel. I think Dr. Izzy also forgot to mention that she sits on our National Board of Directors for NAMI, which is just amazing, and came from our NAMI Georgia Board of Directors. So thank you for having me today. I'm Kim Jones. I am the Executive Director of NAMI Georgia, but I also always say I'm the very proud mother of a child with a mental health condition. I say that very intentionally because my son experienced several other mental health conditions, and I never was embarrassed or afraid. I was excited to tell you he got out of heart surgery well, and I just refuse to be embarrassed over a mental health condition, it is. We all have mental health. So I'm here today to kind of tell you about Senate Bill 132, my favorite bill of the year, done by my favorite Senator, Senator Strickland. He is also one of the Georgia Assembly's Mental Health Caucus Chairs for the Senate side. We hate to see him go. I think he's running for reelection in another light-- in another space. But this is a mental competency evaluation bill. It came out of the Behavioral Health and Reform Innovation Commission. We all have lots of acronyms in mental health. I am honored to be appointed to that commission to represent advocacy on behalf of the late Speaker Ralston, and Speaker Burns has continued to have me on. So I'm very grateful for that opportunity. But Senate Bill 132, what it does is it changes how we handle people who are incompetent to stand trial. Unfortunately, currently today, hopefully maybe not this number as of now since this bill, well, the bill just got signed, so it hadn't happened yet. Will go into effect July 1st. We have over 800 Georgia citizens sitting in our county jails awaiting an evaluation for competency. And what that means is they're evaluated by a doctor to make sure that they are competent to stand trial. Many of those people stay in the jail system longer than they would have if they had been found guilty of what they were charged. That is very serious and puts us at risk of a DOJ settlement from our Department of Justice based on civil rights because we are all due a speedy trial. So what this bill does is changes the process in the outline what the courts can do. It gives the courts more authority over this process and also allows the courts to turn custody over to a person, over to DBHDD, Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities, our mental health department. And so in the past, it was like 120 days, unfortunately, for the evaluation to be done, which we never met because we have a workforce shortage here in Georgia. Could explain more of that, but we're working on that process now. We've got our Medicaid reimbursement rates raised, but it's going to take time. This dropped it down to 45 days. After 45 days, then the court system can give custody of that person if they do suspect or they are notified of a mental health condition, over to DBHDD to be evaluated. Once that person is there for 45 days, if they have a low-level misdemeanor, it is dismissed. Right? So we're giving help instead of handcuffs. Many of our people who are encountered by mental health are arrested for such things as trespassing, homelessness, that's where that comes from, shoplifting, and very low-level crimes, and yet because there's no other place to take them, they end up in our jail system. So this bill, what it does is to allow more timely competence evaluation, reduces the unnecessary institutionalization. If you're unaware, once they are in the jail system, they often do not receive the medicine or care they need for their mental health, so they decompensate even more, which in the end provides, creates more damage to people, and better protects the rights of individuals with mental health conditions involved in the criminal legal system, providing help and not handcuffs. So I, we have this in your folder, so there is a complete, the QR code has the complete bill, if you enjoy reading legislation, need something to put you to sleep. I also want to just let you know what's in our packet. There were actually 12 bills that were passed this session. We put them there under this past three years since 2022, when House Bill 1013 passed. We have passed 50 bills for mental health, which many, there are many advocates who remember when there were no bills, and all of that is in your packet. And also, one thing that we cannot leave without telling you about is House Bill 1013, historic bill passed unanimously on both sides, House and Senate. The main crux of that 76-page bill was parity, which means that mental health must be treated in the same way that physical health is through our insurance companies. We put some information that if you get a call from a constituent about not being able to get care, that they can call us and we will help them through the process of getting, if they're denied care, care. And then finally, I left you some information about our Rockdale, NAMI Rockdale, Newton Counties, and those ladies are here tonight if they want to stand and just let you know that we put some information because you have a great NAMI here locally that you can refer people to for help. And then finally, last but not least, I want to recognize Chairman, Commissioner Mason. He was one of our Legislative Mental Health Advocate Award winners last year, Legislative A-Team. Happy to be here again to see you in person, so thank you very much. Any questions?
Any questions?
Discussion?
Oh. Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Jones, you said about 800 jail. Do you know what percentage of that possibly mental health?
Those are the mental health. Eight hundred equal with mental health. Waiting a competency evaluation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other question? Oh, Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Jones, and thank you, Dr. Izzy, for this amazing presentation. This bill is very, very important. The Senate bill is very, very important. Currently, Dr. Izard and I are working on, and I'll just put it out there, currently working on a mental health initiative. And with that mental health initiative, a portion of that is to address that mental health that's going on in our jail systems. And so now having that bill in place is really going to be vital and important to this area of work to ensure that those individuals that may have seemed like they were criminals, they had that mental health concern, now we can address it versus treating them as a criminal. We can really address the root cause of what their issues are so that we can help them reacclimate themselves and get them back into society so that they can feel good about who they are. I have thoroughly enjoyed delving into this area of work over the past couple of years. We still have a whole lot to do, and so I'm going to remain a huge advocate for being able to address this mental health concern. So thank you for the award that you gave me last year. I was honored to receive that and really want to be an advocate and really do the work, get down in the trenches, not only help those that are in our jails, help our students that we see arise in that area, being able to help those within our community where we're seeing a rise from mental health. I know for years, we kind of just pushed mental health under the rug and said, oh, they'll be okay. But now we see, and I think COVID-19 really highlighted that we really need to address this concern, and so we're going to be doing everything we can to be able to make sure that we help those within our community really deal with this matter that they incur. So thank you so much.
No, thank you, Commissioner. I do want to make two points on that. This bill will help you locally as Newton County because they will get them out of your jail system where you're paying for them and put them in the state system where that's where they're supposed to be. Secondly, I totally agree about the children, which is so much needed, ages 12 to 24. Everyone has it a little bit different. The second leading cause of death is suicide. Second cause. You don't have to worry about putting a helmet, putting a seatbelt on. You have to worry about where your child is for 20 minutes when you are not looking at him because that's how long it takes from the moment a child decides to commit suicide to do it.
Wow.
So I'm really happy to hear that this group is here doing the work they're doing within the schools. That's what we need because it's very serious.
Yes, and we're definitely going to be bringing with this mental health initiative that we're looking to launch. We've now identified most of our stakeholders, and so once we get them solidified and identified, we're going to just be asking the community to even kind of help us, and we're going to be rallying together, having meetings, really having discussions and conversations about this area of work. And so I'm really excited about it, to be an advocate, to really help address this concern within our community. So thank you for being a major partner.
Thank you, Chairman, for allowing us to be here.
Thank you so much. And want to thank Commissioner Mason again for serving on our Viewpoint Health Board of Directors, which is our largest mental health organization that serves Newton County. So thank you so much. Thank you all again.
Ladies, if you could stay, wait. We're going to ask the students if they can just come up and stand across the banister right here so we can take a group picture. We also are going to ask the Commissioners if they can come and stand to take a photograph. And Mr. James Brown, I do believe you have the proclamation for Ms. Molly to provide to her and the students as well. Thank you.
I'm sure I'll be nice to meet you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, the next item we have on the agenda is going to be Item Number Seven, and it's our report from our county manager, Mr. James Brown.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. We would like to invite the Ms. Lindy, Lindsey Petrini up to the podium to give the board an update for the ARPA grant that was received by Piedmont Hospital and kind of give us an update on that.
Good evening. Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to present tonight. I wanted to take just a moment before I get started, to those of you that were part of the decision to provide the $2.2 million in ARPA funding to the hospital, we're just incredibly grateful for that. And for those of you that were not on the board at that time, I have been here just shy of two years as the CEO of Piedmont Newton Hospital, and the support that you have shown me in that time has been just remarkable, and so just very grateful for this board. I'm going to take a few minutes to give you an update on where we are with the hospital as far as the bed expansion, and then it opened up to any questions, so. So just to keep everybody focused on what the request was several years ago, is that, you know, we at Piedmont Newton really believe that we want to keep care close to home. At the time, we were experiencing growth throughout the past three years. That growth has been attributed to a couple of different things. It started out due to the pandemic, followed by community growth that we've seen in Newton County, and then just the service line expansion here within our community as far as physicians and services coming into our community. So that really created a need for the bed expansion. So just to remind you of the timeline, so the state awarded the hospital, because of its growth, a certificate of need for a 10% increase in beds. The state of Georgia is a certificate of need state, so we do have to request those beds when capacity, when we are at capacity. Piedmont requested from this board $2.2 million in ARPA funds, and then the hospital itself, Piedmont, also put forward capital funds. That all was awarded in August of 2023, and construction began. We had to do what we call domino projects. We had to move some services out to put the beds in place, so throughout 2024, that construction was underway, and the beds were officially done in December of 2024, and the state awarded the license-- We have new providers for cardiology, neurology, endocrinology. We've expanded our infusion department. We've added additional orthopedic services and robotic technology to support those orthopedists. We've upgraded our imaging in all modalities, mammogram, CT, MRI, echo, all of those have been upgraded within the past two years. We have our medical office building off of 278, which is East Side Crossing. That was an $8 million capital investment by Piedmont for services here in our community. We have new affiliated urology providers. We have renovated our ICU and our IMCU. We've upgraded our neonatal ICU unit to a Level III NICU. Today, I have 13 babies in that Level III neonatal ICU. That has been just a remarkable commitment to this community for those babies coming and staying in our neonatal ICU. And then we reopened our sleep lab. So, these are the investments that we will be bringing to the hospital just in this year alone. So, we will be opening our heart failure clinic. We have, at this point in time, we have about five new providers that have already signed to join us this year in all different areas, including another orthopedic surgeon, another endocrinologist, and several primary care physicians. We are reopening our Cinderella shop, which is our philanthropic shop that supports, it is a shop where it's a resale shop where we use that funding to go back to community scholarships for students. We are increasing our ORs. We've expanded our emergency department waiting room. We will be moving ourself to a primary stroke center to help continue to keep our care and our patients here. And then we are modernizing our patient rooms. So, when you look at the next slide, just because I like to remind everyone of the investment by, to our community, because hospitals really do support and serve as a piece of our infrastructure. This past two years, we've given $11.8 million in capital for the hospital itself, and then the $8 million investment in East Side Crossing by Piedmont. We have over 913 employees now. When I got here, we had 700. So, in less than two years, we've added over 200 net new employees to the hospital. We provide 64.5 million in salaries, wages, and benefits, 126 million in total expenditures. And as a nonprofit organization, this past year, we provided $76.9 million in uncompensated care to our community. So, so to provide you that overview, just because I want you to know that we are working hard for this community. The $2.2 million that you provided to us has gone to good use, and Piedmont's investment has continued to grow beyond that, and as the, as the community grows, we continue to provide that access close to home. Any questions for the, from, for me?
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. Thank you. First of all, I was one, I am one of the old commissioners who came up to your office and we, a couple of us, we talked about it, and you were so very excited then and telling us what was coming. And I was, we talked about, a little bit about the old hospital of Newton and Piedmont Newton, and what a big difference it was. And we were talking about the expansion of the emergency room and et cetera. And I had the opportunity because my wife said she had got sick and stayed in there for a while, and so when she was doing good, I would explore the hospital. And one of the things, I think, some of the people who worked there, nurses and stuff, said, we have a nice hospital here, but we don't have no parking. We need somewhere to park. So, you know, I said that on my watch that I was going to somehow another lobby my fellow commissioners and try to find a way to do a parking deck at the hospital. So, we have, oh, we have good, close parking because some of them was complaining about, and they didn't know I was a commissioner. It was just, we got to talk, you know, I get to talking with people, and she was, they were telling me, saying, we had to park so far from the building on the walk, and that was a concern to me. And so, I'm, I'm hoping that at some point, we can look at maybe doing a parking deck for our hospital.
Well, I appreciate that. We have done some work to try to decompress parking. We still have some work to do. During the domino projects of the ARPA funding, one of the things we did was we had to move cardiac rehab offsite, so it went to the East Side Crossing location, which decompressed about 50 cars a day. And then we're presently looking at restriping. We believe we've got some opportunity where we can write, restripe and add a little bit more. Of course, a parking deck, those will get us, you know, 20, 30. Nothing gets you quite the, the level of a parking deck, but we do recognize that parking, as we grow, you know, that is the one thing. In fact, I think I said that to my board the other day, everything's growing except parking, and we've got to figure, figure that out. So, I appreciate that observation and the support.
And one last thing, you know, the people who work at Piedmont Newton, they are so professional, you know, and they don't turn nobody away. I like the word nonprofit. You come in, you're going to be seen, and you're going to be helped, and that's what I love about Piedmont Newton.
Thank you. Our sole purpose is to support the community. Without that mission, hospitals shouldn't exist. We're here to support the community and want to make sure we do everything we can that if a patient needs care in Newton, we keep it in Newton.
Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Petrini, for being, one, for this awesome presentation, two, for being an amazing partner in our community. I was also one of those commissioners that you invited to sit down in your office a couple of years ago when you first got here, and I'll never forget when I walked into your office, just the positive aura that you had and the vision that you had for our local hospital in service to our community was just phenomenal. And I have just thoroughly enjoyed the friendship that we have maintained since then, and even when I come to you about serving things, you're very open, you're very willing, and you want to do everything you can to be solution-driven. And so, thank you for that. And I just wanted to put, ask one quick question. I know we've kind of been having some conversations about our ambulatory services, and so I would just like for you to just share with the board and share with everybody your vision and some of the things that you're putting in place now to really make sure that our ambulatory services is positively impacting our community.
So, a couple of things, and you've heard me say this, things like first response are a process. You know, it starts with a call and it ends at the hospital. And so, there are certain things that we're doing within the facility. I think one of the major comments I made to the hospital when we first got there as it relates to response was, you know, the best way to, to keep ambulances in the county is not to transfer patients out. And how do we, as a hospital, work to continue to increase care in the hospital so the patients stay here? When you looked at something like moving to primary stroke center, that's a increased certification that we receive, so patients that would normally have to go out of the county now come straight to us. So, that's part of it. Also, working directly with the county as it relates to understanding our first response times, making sure that we know how many ambulances, ambulances we should have, and that our ambulances are in the right place. And I really have to, and you've heard me say this, I, I would love to give myself all the credit, but I have to give a lot of credit to Chief Turner from the fire department and the, and the county manager at the time, Harold Cooper, for really embracing the subject of how we, as a county and a hospital, work together as it relates to that ambulatory response. And as you also know, I switched the contract at the time from national to central. If you can't uphold the contract, then we'll just get a new contract, and I think that played a huge role. And leadership within that, within the EMS providers, and then also the support from, from Chief Turner and from county manager Cooper at the time, really helped us to improve that. We still have a lot of work to do. We still, as you know, we had a conversation the other day about what that looks like from a future standpoint. I followed up with Mr. Brown, and he and I will be having a couple of conversations to bring something forward, and this is my, been my commitment, and I know you've all heard me say this, I'm not going to bring something forward to anyone that I don't think is correct, and I don't think is accurate, and I don't think is appropriate. And so, that was mine and Mr. Brown's commitment as it relates to that, that before we bring anything back to the commissioners as it relates to our ambulatory services, it's got to be right.
Wow, thank you. That is exactly what I mean by, she is very solution-driven, and I'm so glad that you are the CEO and what you're doing to really change the trajectory of our local hospital is phenomenal, and I just wanted to say thank you, and hopefully you'll never leave.
Well, I, I know, some of you know this, I, I didn't just become the CEO of Newton County, I moved to Newton County. So, my family and myself, we are all invested and, you know, just appreciate how much the county and the citizens have welcomed my, myself and my family.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Long?
Very quick, just a light shining on Newton County when you came, and I had the privilege of meeting you early on as a neighbor to mom. So, she is just incredible, and building yourself in this community has been a lot. Just want to commend you guys. A couple of years ago, when you would have to go to a women's diagnostic, you would have to wait till your anniversary of your insurance and then call and make an appointment, which made it go a, a month out. So, you know, I used to always go in October. Now, I'm all the way into May because it took so long to get them. The last two years, you can call up there and you can get an appointment in the same week, and it's awesome. And just the care that you receive there for women is just unbelievable how that is being done. It's all online, you can do it online, you can call in, whatever, but that, that is so great that you can just think about it today and get an appointment in the same week, and that is, to me, tremendous because it, for years, it's not been like that at all. And any other services that you need from the hospital, I've just been really impressed with what you do and then how you build your community, and I enjoy having you as a neighbor also.
Well, thank you. That goes back to those, that additional imaging equipment. We invested in a third digital mammal machine a little over a year ago, so that's why you're seeing that difference.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate that.
Appreciate the partnership. Y'all have a wonderful evening.
Wait, just one second. Commissioner Edwards, I think, has something.
I'll be brief. Thank you, Ms. Lindsey, for coming up here and giving this presentation, and we were, I was part of that board as well that helped provide some of that ARPA money. It was, I thought it was wonderful money spent, and I want to echo what these guys have said about you being a, a light in our community. It was, you know, you weren't on the job two days probably when we had our first lunch, and I started screaming about the ambulance, and, and we, we've made that progress, and I think working with the chief to maybe to, to logistics for ambulances has, has helped out quite a bit, I would think, and I'm just glad it's worked out. I know we've, if I could just get to where I could beat you in golf and skeet you, and I'd be a whole lot better. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Petrini. The next item on the agenda is listed as unfinished business, but we have none to consider this evening. After that, we have item number nine, the consent agenda. We need a motion to approve it if it's needed. Please note, all of the items listed under the consent agenda are budgeted items.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, that motion passed.
Madam Chair, the next item we are running into is new business, and it is listed under item number 10. We have our Sheriff Ezell Brown. Sheriff Brown is requesting approval to apply for the QuickTrip grant, and this is regarding purchasing cameras. Sheriff Brown, if you're available, we can accept you at this time.
Good evening. Madam Chair, and those of you that make up this board, it's good to be before you this afternoon. It's very simple, it's stated, the Office of Sheriff is applying to seek a grant from QuickTrip, and QuickTrip, whether you know it or not, is, is a business that believe in giving back to the community. QuickTrip donates more than 5% of its annual profit back to, to the community, and especially to 501(c)(3) and other nonprofits, to include law enforcement agencies. They just awarded more than $7 million to, to the Atlanta metro area. So, we thought it'd be fitting for the Office of Sheriff to apply for grants to help forward or move forward with the camera program that we're seeking to put out in our community, and I believe the grant amount is somewhere in $89,000.
880.
You got it.
That's a pretty big grant.
That's right. So, it's no match.
Do we have any questions?
Do you need a motion to, to approve, accepting the grant?
Do you have a question?
Make a motion. So, I'll move that we approve the, request approval to apply for the QuickTrip grant.
Okay. Second, all in favor?
Can we have discussion?
Just, wait just one second. Now, we'll have a discussion.
I just wanted to say, now, Sheriff, these cameras are going to be the ones, kind of what we talked about, some we can put at some of the park locations that we needed, we can utilize these, or are these going to be for other locations?
Quite frankly, we're not going to disclose the location of the cameras.
Okay. Makes sense to me. I, I appreciate that. Thank you, Sheriff.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Sheriff Brown, we appreciate all the work that you do. You are a very busy, a busy sheriff. In fact, I think you're the most busy sheriff, hardworking sheriff that I have seen since I've been on the board, and I know we are truly, I won't say lucky, we're truly blessed to have you and the fact that you are still leading us, you know, in the right direction. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sheriff, if you awarded this grant, do we have a timeframe on receiving?
Well, I believe it's, the request got to be in by the 27th of June, and you know how grants work. We may be a part of the pot, and we may not be. We just got to, as they say, wait, watch, and see.
Anyone else? Okay, now we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, the next item we have on the agenda is item number 11. We have Deputy Chief Craig Lumpkin coming for fire services. He is requesting approval to apply for the Auto Club Foundation Grant to purchase traffic safety educational materials.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Board of Commissioners. We were, keep it brief, want to see, get your approval for the application to apply for the Auto Club Foundation Grant. It is no match. This gives us the opportunity to purchase traffic safety equipment, materials, to be able to present and, and present for, in front of students as well as the community. I hold my time for any questions.
Any questions from the board? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move.
Which, you got that? Did you get the second? Commissioner Cooper? Yeah. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion approved. Thank you. Okay, now we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Madam Chair, the next item we have on the agenda is item number 11. We have Deputy Chief Craig Lumpkin coming for fire services. He is requesting approval to apply for the Auto Club Foundation Grant to purchase traffic safety educational materials.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Board of Commissioners. We were, keep it brief. Want to see, get your approval for the application to apply for the Auto Club Foundation Grant. It is no match. This gives us the opportunity to purchase traffic safety equipment, materials, to be able to present and present for, in front of students as well as the community. I hold my time for any questions.
Any questions from the board? Okay, is there a motion? Which, you got that? Did you get the second? Commissioner Cooper? Yeah. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion approved. Thank you.
Madam Chair, the next item on the agenda we have is being presented by our Finance Director, Ms. Brittany White. She's going to present the April 2025 financial report. It's listed in your side pocket.
Good evening. Tonight I will be presenting the April 2025 financials. April is the 10th month of our fiscal year, so that puts us roughly about 84% of the way through the fiscal year. So, I will start with our general fund revenues. To date, we have brought in 88.9 million in revenues, so that's right around 89% of our actual to budget. So, this graph just shows the per-month breakdown for revenues as the fiscal year has progressed, and then the graph below shows actuals to budget. So, for our general fund expenditures, to date, we have spent 79.7 million, which is around 80% of our expenditure budget. And these two graphs also just show the monthly breakdown and the actual to budget breakdown as well. So, at this point in the year, our revenues are 9.2 million over our expenditures. As we progress through the fiscal year, you will see that number continue to drop. So, for our three enterprise funds, our Water Fund, to date, they have brought in 10.3 was their revenue actual, and then their actual expenses is 6.3 million. For Solid Waste, their revenue actual is 8.4, expenses 6.2 million. And for the Gaithers and Factory Shoals Fund, 186,000 is their revenue to date, and expenses is 223,000. We have three active SPOLS. Our 2011 SPOLS has one remaining project, the Historic Jail. We have a couple of projects left in our 2017 SPOLS that has a balance of 31 million remaining. Our 2023 SPOLS does show a negative 586,000. That's only because we have bonded projects, and so we'd make drawdowns on those. Our 23 SPOLS collections to date, we are at 39.8 million, which puts us right around 8.3 million over our original projected numbers. So, we are trending pretty, to be in pretty good shape by the end of this SPOLS. Our impact fees, we currently have 1.9 million in those. We did recently add some new buckets to that for public safety, so eventually, once those buckets build up, you'll be seeing some public safety expenditures there. And that wraps up the presentation. Are there any questions?
No question. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brittany, I just thank you for all your hard work that you have done for us.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
I'm sure all of us, all of us, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Madam Chair, we're on item number 13. We have fire services once again. Deputy Chief, would this be you? Deputy Chief Craig Lumpkin will come back requesting approval for update of mutual and automatic aid agreement with Rockdale County.
Good afternoon, or good evening again. This is a mutual aid agreement that the majority of all of our counties that we touch, we are having an agreement updated, so we can ... I'm sorry, so we can provide services as well as, if we need assistance from them, we can also get assistance from them. So, this is the Rockdale Mutual Aid Agreement that New Fire Chief Jimmy Robertson has presented to us, so if we can get your approval on that, that'd be awesome. Stations 14, 7, 8, and 9 are the ones that touch Rockdale County, so as y'all know, when we went to a bio lab, we also sent some of our units there to assist and assist them with running calls while they were mitigating the bio lab fire.
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Long?
How many years have we had an agreement like this in place?
So, from my understanding, we've had this for quite a while. They just need to be updated.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I thought we had, where we worked together with the other county for a different problem. Thank you.
Any other question? Need a motion? Second? All in favor? What? Okay, discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, that was unanimous. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, the next item we have on the agenda is item number 14. Our Transportation Director, Mr. Chester Clegg, is going to present for Public Works, requesting approval of the proposed 2026 county road resurfacing project per the attached road list for 2026.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me. Public Works is proposing to resurface the project list that I provided the board a couple of months ago, and then the same list, basically the same list again this week. We would like to use 6.5 million from the general fund balance, and let Brittany explain how to do that.
So, I have a budget amendment in conjunction with this. Would this need to be voted on separately or together? Separately?
Yeah, you'll need two votes.
Okay. So, the budget transfer for this, what it's going to do is it's going to take 6.5 million from our fund balance. So, essentially what this will do is it'll increase the revenue number, so that revenue is called use of prior year fund balance. So, when we up that revenue number, we're also gonna increase an expense line item called transfer out to the 2023 SPOLS, because essentially what this is doing is helping to replace some of the funds that he doesn't have in the new SPOLS for general paving, since we have divided the SPOLS money into multiple projects. Any questions about this budget amendment or how it works?
Commissioner Henderson?
How much money do we have in our fund balance?
Currently, there's right around 62 million. So, this will be reducing it by 6.5 million.
Thank you.
Any other? Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I think it's important to reiterate, and Brittany just stated it, our current SPOLS is devoid of this money, unlike the previous SPOLS. So, now we have to dip into our money, our, the money we put back for emergencies. We have to, if we want to have tangible, if we want to spend our dollars on tangible things, that's it. The citizens can see those dollars being used. So, I think it's a worthwhile use of money. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other? Commissioner Long?
Brittany, thank you. We had some discussions today about this, and, you know, it may come to a point, because of our county growing and our road department needing money, that I actually mentioned something today that's probably freaked everybody out, but, you know, that at some point, we may have to go to the voters and rearrange some of those dollars. We have a lot of projects in there to get done, and we need road improvement, and I think that we left off a lot of roads out of a SPOLS project that we voted on a couple of years ago. And now that the county has changed, that happens all the time. You put all these things out there, and then all of a sudden, you know, growth comes, different things come. So, it's for another date, but I want to talk about, you know, we've got to keep up our infrastructure. We've talked about infrastructure, infrastructure. It's great to have all these wonderful projects that we have, but then we have to manage those projects. So, I am definitely a fan of keeping our infrastructure up and putting those things first, but that would, you know, require us to go back and do a lot of work, but we could.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
And what you'll need to do is a motion to approve the budget amendment is presented by the Finance Director. And if you want, you can go ahead and approve the road list. We can make it one motion for two purposes.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, the next item we have is item number 15, being presented by our Director of Development Services, Ms. Shayna Appleweight. Discussion and consideration for approval for adoption, the transmittal resolution are as in Robert 05202025 for the report, an annual update of the Fiscal Year 24 Capital Improvement Element Short Term Work Program, Fiscal Year 24, CIE STWP, to send to the Department of Community Affairs.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and good evening, members of the board. Earlier this year, we did a transmittal of this report to DCA for review and approval, and on April 17th, and as Latonya said, this is Resolution R 052025, which is the Fiscal Year 24, CIE Short Term Work Program Annual Update. And we complete this report annually, as it is required to allow us to maintain our qualified local government status, which allows us in turn, you know, to get funding and grants and so on from the state. So, on April 17th, DCA sent back our approval for this annual update, and this is what we're presenting today for adoption. And it is pretty much the same report that was submitted earlier. They didn't have any major changes on that. Their letter of approval, as well as their recommendations, are included in your packet, and the recommendations were minor. We did address that with the Transportation Department. It was just to put in his impact fee percentage for one project. All the projects in green are what have been completed over the past year, and everything in white are projects that are either underway, which means they're currently happening, or they're postponed pending availability of funds, whether it's impact fee funds or SPOLS dollars. And of course, we've added our three new departments, Fire Services, Animal Services as well, and Sheriff's Office. And these are, you know, the various projects that have been submitted. So, we have our Roads Department, and these are some of the projects that they have, as provided by that department. Estimated cost currently is about 58 million. We have a library. They have one project pending, which is Library Collections, Volume 2, which is about $50,000. We have our Parks and Recreation. They're at, right at 10 million, and they've identified projects in each district that they're working on. We have our Animal Services. They've already acquired their vehicles. They had three vehicles at $80,000 each, and the other project they have now is just a play yard addition for the animals. Fire Services, they have already acquired their two altering fire vehicles, and they have a few projects pending availability of fees. And of course, we have the Sheriff's Office. They have provided a list of projects that they have, valued at about $25 million. And as funds become available, we'll start looking at those. This is our impact fee financial report. Again, there are only three departments listed here, because this is the 2024 report. The next year, in 2025, you will see those three departments, added Fire, Sheriff's Office, and Animal Services. So, our impact fee balance at the end of 2024 fiscal year was about $3.4 million. And if there are any questions for staff, if not, this is open for a public hearing.
Madam Chair, we're throwing you a little curveball. It was not listed on the agenda as a public hearing, but it was advertised as a public hearing, and while the law probably doesn't require us to do it, since we advertised it, we should open a public hearing in case anybody went out of the way to appear.
Okay. Anyone that would like to speak for this? Public hearings now open. Okay, well, the public hearing is now closed for the people that would like to speak for this. Is there anyone who would like to speak against this? Okay. That will close the public hearing for against. Any questions from the board? Okay, can we have a motion? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, we're on item number 16. This is our final opportunity for citizen comments. It is open for all citizens to address the board for any topics impacting Newton County. There is a three-minute maximum, which will be listed on the screen. If you do have citizen comments, please come forward at this time, provide your name and your property address for our records. We would ask that if you do have comments, to please kind of lean and speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Do we have any citizens' comments tonight?
This is open for you to speak at any topic right now that either happened during the meeting or an item that may be impacting the county.
Would you come forward and speak in the mic, please? And if you would give us your name and address? Thank you.
Claudia Williams. Well, I have several addresses in Newton County, but I'll give you 4548 Salem Road. It's my business location. So, my question is, this is the first time I've come to, not the first time I've come to any meetings, but the first time I've come to this one without having an agenda. So, the question I would like to ask is, seeing the buzzard and all that's going on, what exactly do you guys have planned for the lower part of Highway 162? Because I know the road is being expanded to about Summit Store Road. So, are there any expansion moving from that point to 81? No?
Well, I don't think you can ask questions at this... Okay, that'll be addressed during the commissioner's comments.
Okay. All right.
Is there anything else you want to say?
Yes. Yes. I was also wondering if Newton County Water, do they come here? Because I need to, I'm septic, and I need to tap into the sewer. And looking at it, for me to do it personally, I don't call my business a small business. I call it a microbusiness. So, it's gonna cost me thousands of dollars to tap into the sewer system. So, I'm just wondering, how can the county assist people like us to get on the sewer system so we can expand our business, the way we'd like to expand it?
You'll have to speak with the Water and Sewerage Authority.
I've already spoken to them, and they have, they have left it in my hands to come up with thousands of dollars for engineer work and installation.
I'm sorry, that's the place that we need to direct you.
I beg your pardon?
That is where you would need to go and try to work that out with them.
I've already done that.
I don't have another answer.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I got compliances.
That's not something we can control.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other citizens' comments tonight?
The next item we have at this time, Madam Chair, is item number 17, and we will begin the commissioner comments, and I think that we can start with District 1 Commissioner Stan Edwards.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I'll be brief. I just want to make a comment as to the fluidity, I hope that's the word, of our meetings. They, this, for the, for this year, for this calendar year, they sure have been productive. They've been a pleasure to attend, and it hasn't always been that way the last several years. So, I appreciate your leadership and Mr. Cooper's involvement as well. So, just thank you all for being, making these meetings productive. Doesn't mean we always all agree, but we're allowed to disagree now. Where in the past, we weren't. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a couple of items added because of Ms. Williams. Thank you, Ms. Williams, for coming. I'll definitely address those. First, quick... Uh, first quick announcement, um, we're going to be having our movie in the park. Um, you all know we do this annually. This is our, my fourth year doing this in May, June, and July. So we're going to have Movie in the Park on June the twentieth at Denny Dobbs Park. Uh, we want everybody to come out. We have an amazing movie. We're going to be celebrating Juneteenth. Uh, last month in May, we celebrated Cinco de Mayo. Uh, this month, or June, will be Juneteenth. And then in July, we'll do Back to School, uh, and the Movie in the Park as well. So, uh, we're looking to have some entertainment, uh, great food, great fellowship, great fun. Bring your lunch, chairs, blankets, all that good stuff. We're going to watch the movie on the lawn and just have an amazing time. Um, also for on tomorrow, uh, we're going to be having a District Two Town Hall in regards to an actual project that's going to be coming up. Um, I, I have put it all out on my social media page. And so I just wanted to, uh, make it an announcement to put it on the record. Um, it's going to be tomorrow, five-thirty to eight. Uh, snapping shows EMC Headquarters, one-four-seven-five-zero, Brown Bridge Road, Covington, Georgia, three-zero-zero-one-six. Uh, it's in regards to a potential, uh, solar facility that's going to be coming to the, uh, potentially, uh, coming to the community. And so we want to have a discussion, uh, to see if it's going to be a fit for our community or, or not. And so please come out to that, uh, community open house tomorrow, uh, for that particular town hall. Also, I wanted to say congratulations to our youth commission. Uh, they graduated on yesterday. Uh, some amazing, amazing young people from our high school, Newton, uh, high school, Alcovee, and Eastside. And, uh, they learned a lot, uh, about government and leadership. Uh, they had their, uh, propo- presentations, their project proposals that they presented, uh, on yesterday. They are all phenomenal. Uh, each commissioner got a folder, got a packet, uh, kind of sharing what the youth commission would like to see within our community. And so I would like to, um, encourage, uh, each one of my colleagues to really review those proposals and see how we as a board can come together to find a way to implement, uh, what our youth commission has recommended or suggested, uh, that we do for our community. Um, Ms. Williams, on the Salem Road expansion from Smith Store to Highway eighty-one. One sixty-two or Salem Road is a state highway. Um, and so right now, Georgia Department of Transportation, they would be the ones responsible for the expansion versus the county, since it is a state road. And so what they've done is, in the initial project, they only did it from, uh, Highway twenty up to Smith Store. So hopefully, um, once they get this project completed, um, hopefully they'll go back and look and say, hey, we need to just go ahead and finish it out to Highway eighty-one and maybe a little bit further. Um, I think that would be something that they can definitely look at. But, you know, we can have a conversation with our county manager, uh, where we can have a co- additional conversation with our Transportation Director to kind of reach out to our, um, regional director with Georgia Department of Transportation to kind of see, uh, if and when that can be a next project for Georgia Department of Transportation. Um, and then lastly, um, the sewer system matter, um, I think we kind of had a conversation in regards to that. Um, please, um, send that email to me. Once you send that email to me, we'll kind of get some parties involved and have some additional discussion and just additional conversations to see how we can, um, maybe address or provide some solutions to that. Uh, you have an amazing business, and so we want to make sure that it continues to flourish. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to be real brief. Um, I just want to like to thank this board, uh, for allowing me to come in and, and serve with this board. Um, and also want to appreciate your patience, uh, as I've learned this job. It's, it's new to me. So, um, I want to thank y'all for allowing me and, uh, and also assisting me into, um, me stepping in this role. And also want to make sure District Three understand that I'm, I'm new to this job. I'm learning. And I'm, and, uh, and I just want to be able to s- serve the district and also Newton County.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, well, well, uh, first of all, I'd, I'd like to thank our county manager, uh, James, for putting together that, uh, those roads. I think it was a very great program for all of us. And, and, you know, like it used to be said, we want to give every house a turkey. Well, he gave everybody, every house two turkeys, possibly more. And we were appreciative for that. And secondly, I just, um, Patrick and I, we had a, I call it a sidebar conversation. And we were talking about opioids. A few years back, we sued, uh, we sued along with several other counties about the opioid trend, when people were getting all addictive and going and stuff. But make a long story short, they, they are at this time selling it. And I would like, uh, for this board, and I'm, and I'm specifically asking Madam Chair, if she could put it on the agenda, get with Mr. Patrick, our county attorney. And so give us an update on how much money that we have, uh, or that we will receive or have received from that suit, the opioid, because it's a whole lot of people who have, have needs, uh, special substance abuse. And they might could use that money to go towards, uh, helping some people in our cu- community that's in need. And lastly, these are hard jobs. I mean, I remember years back when I came, when Commissioner Long and I, uh, was both selected at the same time. And I tell you, Tommy Ballard almost scared me dead because he would take a beat on it. Like, didn't it scare me to death? But eventually, I started back, beating back with him. And so, um, glory be to God, that I think, uh, I've tried to, can maybe stand my course, not be bald. Nobody can tell me what to do because J.C. Hill is going to do what he, what's right. He's going to rely on his faith in God. And that's how we, we, uh, have been, uh, standing in front of the fourth district. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Long? You good? Well, let me leave you with our thought for today, which is a good thought. So what counts in life is not the mere fact that we've lived. It is what difference we've made to the lives of others. Nelson Mandela. I think that's a good thought to end our meeting on. So do I have a motion to adjourn? Commissioner, second? Okay, all in favor? Okay, we adjourn. Thank you all for coming.